Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their November 17, 2014 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number seven, Public Hearing to Consider the Imposition of a Service Charge in the Downtown Special Service District. And to begin a series of presentations, here's Community and Economic Development Director, Dave Olson.
On July 6, 1998, the City Council approved Ordinance Number 631, which established a Special Service District Number One in the city of Lakeville. This is the Special Service District that was set up for the downtown at the request of the downtown businesses and has been in place now since, every year since then. On an annual basis, the City Council has to review and approve the budget as well as the proposed fees for the coming year for the Special Service District, and that's why we're here tonight. The allocation of fees within the Special Service District that are charged to downtown properties is based on the net tax capacity of the commercial values of these properties. And the proposed amount of the total that would be charged to the, spread across all the properties in the districts, is the same as it was the last several years, and it has $27,500. Included in your packet was the actual budget as to how those funds would be allocated and expended. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Paul Haglund, current president of the DLBA, and Ann Kutzler, the current director of the DLBA, which again is the Downtown Lakeville Business Association. And they have a presentation on the highlights of the last year.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Haglund. I'm the current president of the Downtown Lakeville Business Association. I also own a, an accounting and tax practice downtown in the Wells Fargo Bank Building. With me tonight, I have Ann Kutzler. Ann is our new downtown director, executive director. Ann replaced her longtime director Judy Chumper, who went off to better things earlier this summer. Ann is going to give a short presentation, and then we'll stand for questions. Thanks.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Little, and members of the council. On behalf of Special Service District Number One, also known as the Downtown Lakeville Business Association, we appreciate the opportunity to present our annual report to you this The mission of the Downtown Lakeville Business Association is to create a unique downtown business environment, which blends the cultural, historical, and economic opportunities of a rapidly growing community situated in a major metropolitan area. The Downtown Lakeville Business Association holds a monthly membership meeting at the Lakeville Area Arts Center. We are supported by a board of directors, many of whom are in attendance this evening. We have our president, Paul Haglund, vice president, Mark Kutzler, director, James Kretsch, and Christina Mertow, and we also have our proxy director, Jane Kutzler. We also have an advisory board made up of a group of property owners, business owners, and representatives. Current members of our advisory board include Nancy Smith, Mike Jetchik, John Koznick, Terry Tisher, and Lisa Vassen. And again, some of our advisory board joins us tonight as well. Before we look at the Downtown Lakeville Business Association specifically, I'd like to touch on why a Special Service District or a Business Improvement District is beneficial to our community. A Special Service District not only allows businesses to collaborate on ideas and pool funds for community events, it supports revitalization and maintenance of common areas, allows for increased marketing and promotion, and acts as a voice in partnerships with other community leaders, such as the city and community groups. Everyone from business and property owners to the larger community can benefit from The Downtown Lakeville Business Association works to promote our downtown Lakeville businesses. We advocate and lobby on their behalf through various means, including social media, monthly newsletters, and promotional events. Our events are designed to draw awareness to historic downtown Lakeville, also to give businesses an additional means to promote themselves and create a sense of community. The St. Paul Farmer's Market is one such event, and it brings in an average of 12,000 people on Wednesdays from June to October, and 5,500 on Saturdays from June to September. This is a great opportunity for businesses to reach out to other customers, and we do see the benefit. Terry at Perfectly Random, for example, always knows to staff extra support on Wednesdays during the market. We began our events for this year with the Easter Bunny Breakfast in the spring, which is a combined effort with parks and recreation. The farmer's market opened in June, featuring all locally grown produce. This summer, we had our second annual Black Bash event in August. This was my first event with the DLBA, and it was an event that attendees requested that we have more often. Our trick-or-treat event occurred a few weeks ago and brought in over 400 visitors to downtown Lakeville, including many new faces. Thank you again to Mayor Little for handing out comic books at World of Games during that event. Our holiday lighting ceremony is quickly approaching and is scheduled for Tuesday, November 25th, at 6:00 PM in Pioneer Plaza. We support Small Business Saturday on November 29th, and we also enjoy working with a select group of downtown Lakeville retailers on special events. Our recent Save a Buck Night, which celebrated deer hunting season, was a special shopping night, which our retailers deemed successful. Our special events for our retailers are funded directly by those who choose to participate. Holiday on Main is our final event. It always draws large numbers, and that takes place on Saturday, December 6th, from 9:00 The Downtown Lakeville Business Association is pleased to repeatedly sponsor Cruise Night during Panaprag and supports other programs, such as One Book, One Lakeville. We strive to be involved in many community initiatives and look forward to continued We are fortunate to have partnerships with many community organizations, such as the city of Lakeville, the Lakeville Area Arts Center, and the Lakeville Area Chamber of As we move forward, the Downtown Lakeville Business Association will continue to focus on promoting our businesses in the downtown area, and we hope to capitalize on the growth that Lakeville is experiencing.
Item number seven was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number eight, Public Hearing to Consider the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project. And to begin a series of presentations, here's Public Works Director, Chris Petrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As always, my pleasure to be here with you this evening, talking about the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project, and the purpose tonight is to hold a public hearing. But first, we do have a brief presentation for the council and those in attendance and watching at home. First off, the project location. I know the council is aware of this area, as well as the folks in audience and watching at home as well, but you can see by the yellow lines, this is the area that's proposed for the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project. The road, if you can see that, running north and south on the right side or east side of the project is Cedar Avenue. On the very northerly edge, that's County Road 46 or 160th Street, and over to the west, the other major road that you can see kind of heading north and south and then curving off is Highview Avenue. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will introduce Ms. Monica Heil, who is our operations and maintenance engineer for the city and the project engineer and project manager. Ms. Heil?
Thank you, Mr. Petrie, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you're all familiar, the city does have a pavement management program whereby we rate one-third of the city's streets every year, use that data to help us determine which areas within the city are in need of street reconstruction, and that is how we came to identify this area for street improvements. The area also has a number of utility issues. Water main maintenance issues have been an ongoing maintenance problem for public work staff. Since we began recording water main maintenance issues in 1997, there have been 45 recorded breaks, which are significant, and that is also providing some of the impetus for the improvements in this area. The City Council authorized the preparation of a feasibility report back on July 21st of 2014 that was following a neighborhood meeting for the meeting that was conducted on June 26th of this summer. And then the feasibility report was presented to the city council at its October 20th meeting. At that meeting, the city council also ordered this public hearing for the project. Now, when we look at some of the proposed improvements, one of the major components of the project will be water main replacement. Complete water main replacement is proposed throughout the entire project area. That picture you see there is a picture of a water main break that occurred along Grinnell Way at the end of September. That break was due to some corrosion on the pipe. We mentioned the significant break history in the project area. After completing some soil boring work and soils analysis this past summer, we did determine that the soils within the project area are corrosive. What that means is that the soils have corrosive properties that can adversely affect the iron pipe that exists throughout the project area. So as a part of this project, we are proposing to replace all of the existing iron water main with plastic water main. We'd also propose to replace all of the hydrants and individual services leading to properties up to the individual property's water shut-off location. In addition, we will be reconstructing all of the streets. Complete reconstruction will consist of reclamation of the existing pavement surface and aggregate road base. When we talk about reclamation, that is the process where the pavement and the aggregate are ground up and mixed together and then are reused to form the new aggregate base for the roadway. Doing this in a manner is a cost savings. We reuse materials that are existing on the site, which is, which is very cost-effective. We'll be replacing all of the curb and gutter within the project area to both improve drainage conditions and also facilitate the installation of some additional storm sewer and drain tile improvements, as well as the water main improvements. There is sidewalk within the project area, and while it is not proposed to replace all of the sidewalk, we will be replacing those panels that are structurally deficient or have some drainage issues. When we talk about drainage improvements, we will be installing additional storm sewer within the city's roads, some catch basins to alleviate some localized drainage issues, but we'll also be installing drain tile along all streets, both sides of the streets. Right there is a picture of some drain tile installation that took place on Garcia Way within the 2014 Street Reconstruction Project area. That drain tile serves not only to drain the roadway base, but there will be services stubbed to each property within the project area so that residents can hook up their some pumps to this underground system that will lead to the city's storm sewer system. Another component of the project that we would be looking at with the final design is traffic calming improvements to Griffin Trail. Griffin Trail between Grinnell Way and Cedar Avenue is identified for reconstruction as a part of the project. We have heard from a number of residents regarding vehicle speed concerns along this particular section of Griffin Trail. If the project is ordered and does move forward with the final design of the project, we would be looking for opportunities to install some traffic calming measures. Griffin Trail right now is a very wide roadway. You've got the two through lanes and then also a striped fog line that provides an area for on-street parking. Those wider pavement sections tend to invite higher vehicle speeds. We may look at doing something similar to what was installed along Plaguestaff Avenue this construction season with a series of bump outs, which is the strategic narrowing of portions of the road to create a narrower roadway section that has been proven effective in reducing vehicle speeds. Later this fall, we will be looking at comparing some of the pre- and post-construction speeds along Plaguestaff Avenue and giving you that information as well. Looking at the project, there are eight miles of streets proposed to be reconstructed and eight miles of water main proposed to be replaced. And in Minnesota, completing all of that in one construction season would prove challenging. So we are looking at phasing the project in a manner such that a portion of the improvements would be completed in 2015, and a portion of the improvements would be completed in 2016. We would look to bid the project as two separate contracts, which could invite two different contractors to work within the project area in a given year in an effort to make sure that these improvements are completed in a timely fashion. And what you see represented up there in different colors are different contracts in different phases. Generally speaking, what you see in blue and the orangish color up there are what we consider Phase One, and those improvements would be proposed to be completed in the 2015 construction season. What you see in purple and red would constitute the Phase Two improvements, and we would look to have those improvements completed during 2016. By phasing the project in such a manner, we feel comfortable that the improvements specified can be completed in a timely fashion and also work to minimize the disruption to residents during the construction season. When we talk about the estimated project costs, they are higher than the numbers we originally shared with residents at the June 26th Neighborhood Meeting. At the June 26th meeting, we were looking to seek feedback from residents prior to getting started on the feasibility report. We did not have the benefit of soil borings at that time or a survey, and so we gave them some estimates based on some general costs. Once we did receive the soil borings back and had the results indicating that significant subgrade corrections were going to be necessary in addition to drain tile improvements, the project costs did increase. Right now, they're estimated at $23,420,180. Of that, approximately $9.8 million would be funded using general city tax dollars. City utility funds would fund approximately $7.2 million worth of improvements. That would be the water main replacement and the sanitary sewer improvements that would be made within the project area, and then special assessments would fund the remaining $6.379 million worth of project costs. When we look at the estimated assessments, they are estimated at $8,116.46 per single-family unit. The townhouses and duplex within the project area would be assessed one-half of a single-family unit in accordance with the city's assessment policy, which would be approximately $4,058.23. These are still estimates. These are the estimates completed with the feasibility reports. The final assessment amount would not be determined until the project was bid and the final construction costs were known, which would take place in March of 2015. The city's assessment policy is to specially assess the benefiting property owners 40% of the street and storm sewer improvements. Properties benefiting from the improvements would be assessed for those costs. Water main and sanitary sewer improvements are not assessed to the benefiting property owners. Those improvements will be funded by city utility funds. As I mentioned, families within the project area are assessed on a per-unit basis that are zoned for single-family use. So regardless of lot location, if you're a corner lot, an interior lot, only one single-family unit is assessed, and again, townhouses or duplexes within the project would be assessed a half a single-family unit. Corner lots are assessed only one unit for either the front or the side. The assessments are determined by driveway location or house orientation to the project. So if you have a driveway that fronts on a street that is being improved on one side and the other side of your house is also being improved, you would still only be assessed one single-family unit. When we look at the phasing of the project in terms of construction, that also leads to some phasing in terms of special assessments. Those folks within the Phase One improvements that will start in 2015 would be assessed at an earlier point in time than those folks that would see the construction taste placed during 2016. So what you see represented in this map is again, just a simplified version of what I showed before, but it shows the Phase One and the Phase Two improvements. In blue is Phase One. We would see those improvements taking place in 2015 construction season. Phase Two would be what's showing in purple, and they would be taking place in 2016 construction season. So for those folks that would be seeing the improvements during the 2015 construction season, we will have an assessment hearing for the assessments specifically in April of 2015. Those assessments can be paid without interest by November 15th of next year, and those residents will have an option for either a 20- or a 29-year assessment period. For those residents living within Phase One of the project, their first payment for the special assessment would become due with taxes payable in 2016. For those residents that live within Phase Two, we would also have their assessment hearing on April 6th of next year. They would also have the option to prepay their assessments, but they would have until November 15th of 2016 to make that prepayment, because their construction activity will not start until 2016. There would be some delay in actually having the payment due for them. They would also have the option for a 20- or a 29-year assessment period, and their first payment, should they choose to have it assessed to the property, would be due in 2017. This is a lot of information regarding special assessments and options for repayment. The Finance Director has put together a very comprehensive special assessment guide that can be found on the project website. So if you go to the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project, scroll to the special assessment section, this entire packet can be found on there. It has additional information regarding the dates, the repayment terms, and then also some estimated amortization schedules. And again, what I'd like to stress to residents at this point is that these are still estimates. The default assessment period for the project will be 20 years. Residents will receive an application form mailed with their special assessment hearing notice in March of next year. This application would allow them to apply for a 29-year assessment period. If we have no response from residents, it will default to the 20-year period. If we do receive responses back requesting the 29-period, city staff will make those arrangements. The assessment rate is estimated at about 4% to 5%. We will not know the final rate until bonds are sold for the project sometime next year. There is also an option with this project to pay the entire amount of the assessment within 30 days of the hearing to receive a 2% discount on the special assessment costs. And again, that information is all contained within the special assessment guide that is online. There are deferral opportunities for senior citizens and disabled persons. This information, again, available online. The deferment ends upon death, sale of the property, transfer of the property, loss of homestead status, or determination that no council, by the city council, that no hardship would occur if the payment were required or failure to renew the application. But that option does exist for seniors and disabled persons within the project area. The terms of applying for it, as well as the application, are available online. As we look forward to the project's schedule, we're here tonight to have the public hearing for the project, following the presentation of the feasibility report to the council last month. If the city council decides to move forward with the project, we would begin final design and work towards a bid opening of March 6th in 2015. After the bids are received, we would declare the costs, determine the final assessment amounts, and then set the assessment hearing. So residents would receive something in the mail late March, inviting them to an assessment hearing on Monday, April 6th. We would talk at that meeting specifically about the assessments. The city council would also have the option to award the contract that evening, and construction could begin possibly in April next year if weather permits, but certainly by May of next year, and run until December of 2016, when the Phase Two improvements are completed. With that, we'd stand for any questions, and also move to, council could conduct a public hearing and then consider a resolution ordering the improvements and authorizing the preparation of plans and specs.
Item number eight was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number nine, Public Hearing on Proposed Assessment for City Code Violations. And to give the background information on this agenda item is City Planner, Darrell Morey.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will be brief as well. This is an annual public hearing for the assessment for various code violations. This is my first time presenting it, but you have in your packet the unpaid bills related to various code violations. There's eight properties that are included on the list. The majority of them involve contract mowing for lawn grass complaints. There is one related to a sign ordinance violation, and the assessments include, in the case of the contract mowing, the cost to have that work performed, and then the $70 rein inspection fee that was approved last year as part of the fee schedule, and then the variance, various miscellaneous administrative charges and interest. So there are eight on there. The eight property owners were notified of the assessment related to their projects, and staff is recommending the council adopt this resolution approving the assessments. I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Morey. Councilmember LeBeau?
Nope, I was gonna make--
Withdrawn. Councilmember Swecker?
I was gonna ask, have any of them been paid?
The ones that you have currently are the ones that weren't in effect at the time. There were a couple that were on the list that did pay prior to the agenda going out, but the eight that are on the agenda are the outstanding at this time, yes.
Item number nine was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 10, Public Hearing to Consider an Ordinance Amending Fees. And to give the background information regarding this agenda item is Finance Director, Dennis Feller.
Mayor and members of the city council, it's been a while since we've raised fees. Since the Great Recession, the council has directed that there be very few, if any, fee increases whatsoever. But the economy's changed. Unemployment's down, interest rates still remain at historic lows. Things overall, most economic indicators seem to show that there, things are better. Maybe not as much as good as what we want them to be, but they're definitely better than they were five years ago. As a result, home values are up. Construction value of homes is up. The average building permit right now, just for the building permit and not including the land, is $344,000 for the average home. During the 2015 budget process, you, the city council, directed the staff to look at all fees and how they may affect the budget, and we provided you with an analysis of every single fee, with the exception of the park use fees, which will be provided to you a little bit later here in the coming weeks. We provided you with the historical perspective of those fees. We also included information where it was available on, how it compares with the market, how it compares with other cities, and other relevant factors for establishing the fees. And so we're gonna take just a moment to go over some of the more salient ones. Starting with licenses, there's increases for solid waste, massage therapy centers, massage therapists, and peddlers. Two fees are being eliminated, and those are for tree removal licenses and for kennels. At your March, first meeting in March, you'll be considering increases for liquor-related licenses. On the planning perspective, there's three increases for home occupation permits, the interim use permits for residential properties, and the CUP, IUPN variances increase. There's new fees for getting the first extension and additional extensions. There's probably about 40 other fees related to planning that are unchanged, and the way those fees are established are based in the amount of effort required on the staff part to do those processes fees. In the public safety realm, police officer fees are going up for, based for cost of providing those services. Reservist is a new fee that we charge, will be charging, and basically it's the cost of providing supplies, uniforms for service. The towing fee will increase. We're also providing significant increases for non-resident use of public safety services such as seat, car seat installations, fingerprinting, and alcohol testing. With respect to false alarms for fire or intrusion, we continue to, the first false alarm will be at no charge, however, there will be fees charged for second, third, fourth, and so on, alarm, false alarm charges after that. With respect to utility bills, there are two fee increases, one for water and one for sanitary sewer, and both of those fee increases are related to major maintenance costs. With respect to water use fees, it's again, is related to the water main replacement program. We saw, had a great discussion here just now, just before this. We saw, had a great discussion here just now, just before this issue, that talked about the significant cost of the 2015-16 program for water main replacement. For sanitary sewer, there's a major lift station that has to be replaced in 2016, and we'll need to provide the capital in advance of that project. There's no increases for the coming year for streetlights or for the surface water management fee. How does this impact residential or businesses? The average increase will be somewhere between 3% to 3.5% depending on the water use for them, for the customer. The single largest expenditure the City Council has to work with each year is related to construction of infrastructure. It includes roads, water mains, water infrastructure, water systems, sanitary sewer, your stormwater ponding, and your park facilities. The question is, who is responsible for paying for that infrastructure? And there's three primary customers that could pay for it. The first comes from the development community. It's the fees that you collect from developers at the time they plat the property. The second are from new residents or new businesses. They could also be considered non-residents because they aren't here today. The City Council, many decades ago, made a decision that, to the extent reasonably possible, new residences and new businesses would pay their own way. The City Council at that time said, people who live here already paid for their infrastructure, anybody new coming into town will have to pay their own way. So for the most part, new residences have paid for their own way. But if the council decided that that were not the case, you don't want new residents, new developments, and new businesses to pay their own way, the third option would be to charge existing residents and existing businesses. Let's look at a couple examples, such as water connection charge. Lakeville has probably the highest water connection charge I can find. I cannot find another city that has a water connection charge close to what Lakeville has. Conversely, that water connection charge pays for all of the infrastructure, pays for the towers, the wells, the water treatment facility. And that's the reason why Lakeville has the second lowest water rates in the Twin City metro area, is because residents, we, have all paid for that upfront at the time we bought or built our home. The rate is based on the Water Connection Rate Study that was provided to you last year, in November, as well as all of the comprehensive water plans that have been presented to you, especially those in the last couple of years. Second major area deals with stormwater trunk fees, sanitary sewer, and some water main laterals. Historically, Lakeville has used its comp plans for those various infrastructure, and then adjusted the rates each year based on the Construction Price Index, which is published by the Engineering Review Publication. However, in 2009, the council directed that because of the recession, those fees were to remain flat. As we go into 2015, staff proposed bringing those fees back up to the level consistent with the Construction Cost Index. As such, the recommendation was to, for a 13% increase. City Council discussed this at its November 12th work session and directed that that increase be cut in half to 6.5%. And that is in the ordinance that is before you tonight. With respect to future road upgrades, it's been well over a decade since those were adjusted, and the costs before you are based on prevailing street construction costs to build new roads. With respect to park dedication fees, that fee structure was developed in May of 2012. The structure itself has changed because of the metrics that were contained within the study that was prepared by TPC. That structure was reviewed by the Economic Development Committee, the Planning Commission, as well as the Park and Rec and Natural Resources Committee. Because of the trends that were in place at that time, there still was difficult to obtain accurate information on arm's-length transactions related to land purchases and sales. The decision was made at that time that any increase or decrease in the park dedication fees would be based on corresponding increase or decrease in, as determined by the Dakota County Assessors Office. In the initial year, 2012, the rates were dropped, park dedication fees were dropped approximately 12%, and then again, for 2014, were dropped another 2%. The arm's-length transactions for vacant parcels, now that the economic conditions have improved, we did revisit those residential vacant market values, the land sales that have occurred this past year, and found them to be consistent or within the range as determined by the TPC report in 2012. Also like to mention that there's a proposed adjustment in residential fees. There's no proposed adjustment in commercial industrial fees. Those will be revisited next year. There's no change in building permits, and the only exception to that is a result of the new state law which goes into effect January 1st of 2015 regarding fire sprinklers on residential. New construction fee is proposed of $90. We anticipate issuing over 300 building permits next year. However, based on the statute, there's probably only gonna be about 10 to 15 homes that this will be applicable to. The, there was a legal notice published regarding the fee schedule. There was also an article published in the Messages page. This fee schedule was not reviewed by any committees because we've never done that in at least four decades. And the only exception to that was when we changed the structure of the park dedication fees. That was reviewed by the three committees, but not the fee structures itself. We have it also posted on the city website, and happy to answer any questions. Before you, there is an ordinance, and the reason that some fees are adopted by ordinance is because it's required by state statute, and the rest of the fees are by resolution. Because this is a public hearing, we provide people the opportunity to ask questions, make comments.
Item number 10 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 11, Fulford Group First Edition. And once again, to give the background information on this agenda item is Community and Economic Development Director Dave Olson.
Good evening, again, Mayor and members of the council. Yes, Jim, if I could have the overhead, please. And I will keep this brief. This is a project that we've been before the council a couple times, and there are a number of actions, and all of which are included in your council cover memo. But as Mr. Conley pointed out, we are working on, and we'll wait for it to get focused. Here we go. A project which will consist of a major expansion of the existing Fulford Warehouse, which is now currently occupied by Imperial Plastics and BTD. And BTD occupies approximately a third, excuse me, two-thirds of the existing building, and is proposing a expansion of over 192,000 square feet, which will, as I think I said in one of the earlier meetings on this project earlier this year, make it, I think, which will be the largest single building in Air Lake Industrial Park upon the completion of this. There are a number of planning actions required, and I'll just go over real quickly what they are. And the first one being a comprehensive plan amendment. A number of years ago, and since I've been working here at the city, we went through Air Lake Development that previously owned this property, and it was previously planned and guided for industrial, but since Air Lake Development acquired it from a different developer, and they own this commercial corner here, they requested from the city, and the Planning Commission, City Council approved, basically making this a larger C3 commercial area, and rezoned the property and amended the comprehensive plan at that time. The Air Lake Development Group has tried to market this property for commercial retail development for approximately 10 years, and hasn't been successful. And with the project with the Fulford Group Warehouse, and they were able to negotiate an acquisition of the easterly portion of this property, it's basically taking it back to what it was before. And this is, this is the zoning map then that would show the area that is being proposed to be rezoned from C2 commercial back to I2 general industrial. So there's comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning to accommodate, basically, the expansion of the existing industrial use that is there today, and it's taking it back to what it was before, basically. Real quickly, this is, this is the site plan, and this shows the lot that's being added right now. And the entire Fulford Group Warehouse Building, which consists right now, was platted approximately 30 years ago, is, the existing lot is being replatted and will include the additional 12- to 13-acre portion of the, what has been required, acquired by the Fulford Group from Air Lake Development to facilitate this expansion, again, 192,000 square feet. So it's basically a continuation, and you can see in the upper left-hand corner, it's basically gonna be a continuation of a large industrial warehouse building, and it is today. The exception being, and I think it's significant, right now where this has previously been primarily truck traffic generated out here and not have a lot of employees, all the parking that's being built now is going to be added, is going to be for employees. And actually, the truck parking that's gonna be remaining is significantly smaller than it was when it was previously operated as a Toro Warehouse Building. So there's close to 600 parking stalls that are gonna be added primarily for employees. BTD currently has slightly over 200 employees. They're gonna add an additional 100 in the first two years of this expansion, and as they've indicated, they've indicated publicly in meetings before, as we've talked about this project, that it will increase to over 500 employees in Lakeville in the next five years. So that's what, that's what the parking is being built for. And as alluded to earlier, the existing building did not have stormwater treatment on-site, so we've worked out an agreement whereby a portion of the city land is going to, which is currently taking the runoff today from the existing building. Infiltration area will be constructed there, and then additional stormwater facilities are gonna be shared on the portion on the new planted lot, as well as on a portion of the city-owned property adjacent to the south. The other significant item to point out, I think, is the access that's gonna be added. Right now, everything from the existing Fulford Warehouse has to go out to Cedar Avenue. This project will allow, it'll create what I think we're characterizing as an interim access location onto County Road 50, and it's going there because there are turn lane improvements that were built there the last time County Road 50 was reconstructed, and so it makes sense to take advantage of those, those turn lanes and improvements. They still have to add a right-in turn lane, but the left turn lane and the break-in median is already there. What will happen is when the rest of this outlot, a remaining outlot that's now owned by the Fulford Group develops, is that a new access, permanent access location will be constructed at the easterly boundary of this property. It's also the easterly boundary of the city of Lakeville where it butts the city of Farmington. And that's been in the city's plan. It's been in the plans for this area for quite a while. And finally, the last action that's included in here is a site improvement performance agreement. Because of the time of year, because of the weather, there is a desire on the part of the development, developer, which is the Fulford Group, on behalf of BTD, to begin grading and, and also an extension of a sewer service that has to come from the south to serve this property, both the existing and the proposed expansion. And so included in your packet is a signed, and it's basically an advance or precursor to the full development contract, which will be bringing in with the final plat, which will come in here soon as we can follow that up. But there's a desire to get out there yet this year and do some grading and some utility work, and the site improvement performance agreement that's attached has been signed by the developer. It requires, it will, it will basically get an advance on some of the securities that we typically get with a full-bone development contract. It just allows them to get started a little bit sooner. So with that, I'm sorry, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their November 6th meeting and was recommended unanimously for approval. It was also reviewed by the Park Recreation Natural Resource Committee on November 5th and recommended approval by that group as well. And I should point out that the comp plan amendment also has to go through and get formal approval by the Met Council, which we will be doing now, subsequent to the City Council's action on this. And last but not least, and thanks to Mr. Knudsen's review of the agenda, we have added, and you should have at your desk, an additional resolution, which while not required by statutes, been our practice to do comprehensive plan amendments by resolution, and so if you would include that in your actions tonight.
Item number 11 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 12, City Administrator Employment Agreement. And to provide the background information on this agenda item is Interim City Administrator Alan Kennon.
Tonight, we want to review the City Administrator Employment Agreement as referred to in the council packets. Through an extensive interview and selection process, the City Council has chosen Justin Miller as the next city administrator for Lakeville. As part of the appointment process, Mr. Miller was provided with and has agreed to the employment agreement as provided to the City Council. The agreement outlines the overall terms of employment, including salary, performance evaluations, professional development, work hours, paid time off, and other standard conditions. In addition, Mr. Miller has provided the Personnel Committee with a transition plan and goals, and goals outlining his six-month and one-year objectives to become more familiar with, to familiarize himself with the City Council, community leaders, city staff, and internal policies and operations of the city. The Personnel Committee reviewed the employment agreement and the transition plan goals at the November 12th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of a motion to approve an employment agreement with Justin Miller, appointing him as the new city administrator for the city of Lakeville effective December 29th. Myself, Cindy Juston, and Mr. Miller are available for any questions or comments.
Item number 12 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at a rather lengthy meeting on the evening of November 17th, 2014. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.
The curtain is going up for this year's season at the Lakeville Area Performing Arts Center, and this year, there's something for everyone. From a wide array of musical stylings to holiday seasonal performances, the Lakeville Area Performing Arts Center offers the finest in regional entertainment. Reserve seating for all performances. To find program descriptions and buy tickets online, visit our website at lakevilleareaartscenter.com.